Good evening. I'd like to call to order the August 12 regular meeting of the Boulder Valley School District Board of Education. Sandy, will you please call the roll?
Albright?
Here.
Belville?
Here.
Benford?
Here.
Fuqua?
Here.
Marquess?
Myers?
Here.
Reed.
Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. I would like to remind all who have joined us here this evening and on television of the mission of the Boulder Valley School District, and I'll read it. The mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. And today is the first day back from our summer break, and so it's good to be here. And it's always an exciting time when kids start school and school board starts doing school board work. So let's get started. So the first item of business will be our superintendent's report from Dr. Messenger.
Good evening, President Albright, members of the board. It's great to have you back, and we've been busy while you've been gone, and so we're looking forward to this evening's agenda, a number of important items before you this evening. I would like to mention a few things. First of all, I'd like to introduce a new member to our administrative team on the superintendent's cabinet, so I'd ask Dr. Mark Schaefer to stand, so you can recognize him. Welcome, Mark. Mark is, started with us in June and is previously served as Director of Middle Level Education in the Douglas County School District, also has done professional work in Arizona as well as the Midwest, so we're thrilled to have him on our team. He's taking direct supervision of our middle schools presently and working in partnership with Deirdre to assume the high school through the course of this year. So he'll be one of our two assistant superintendents for school leadership. Sandy Rippon there obviously serves in that other role. So anyway, Mark, welcome to our team and has made quick, fast, positive impressions in our system, so we're thrilled to have him with us, and Douglas County's loss but our gains. So anyway, I'd like to just mention a few things that are going on right now with the start of school just around the corner. We have hired a number of new educators, teachers, well over 100, and so part of the contract this board approved a couple of years ago is that they have a five-day extension for new educators in our system. And so this last week, we've been working on new educator orientation, and that's under the leadership of Assistant Superintendent Shelley Landgraf and other members of her team. And so Deirdre and I presented to them the other day and welcomed, and I think most members of cabinet have and other members of our leadership team. So helping them be adjusted and also a good dose of time back or in their schools getting ready for the start of the school year. I think it's a nice, smooth transition for our newest members of our education team. Also, our new administrators go through an orientation as well, so we had a session with them yesterday afternoon, and they go through a series of trainings and support through the year. They have a mentor that's assigned to them, and so Shelley Landgraf and Mark Schaefer taken lead on that work, along with other members of our cabinet preparing our new administrators. So pleased about that work as well. As you probably know, this Thursday, our regular, full-time teachers, other teachers, part-time return on Thursday, so they have several days until the students return a week later, doing professional development, school-based planning, and also preparation for their classrooms or areas for teaching. So we welcome everyone back, our new educators, as well as our returning educators. So we're looking forward to that. Then on Thursday of next week, the 21st, our students begin to arrive. We have a transition day for our sixth and ninth graders and kindergartners, but within a couple of days, we have everybody here. So anyway, it's an exciting time, good things are going on, we're nearly fully staffed and ready to start. The other thing I want to just give attention to is the annual effort by Impact on Education, which is the education foundation that supports Boulder Valley schools in partnership with the Foundation of the St. Verane School District, raise money through the course of the year, and then they buy and equip backpacks for thousands and thousands of students in the BVSD, as well as St. Verane, addressing a lot of the students' basic needs to be ready for school. As you know, that's been a wildly successful program, and it's, they've been doing their work the last few weeks, months, getting ready for that Western disposal. Our neighbor here on Arapahoe is, you know, one of the major financial contributors to that project and as well as many others. So thanks to our service clubs and others who make that possible, and the leadership of Fran Ryan with Impact on Education. So President Albright, that would conclude my remarks for this evening, and I look forward to any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you. Are there, board members, are there any questions or comments? Okay. The next item of business is board communication. So, board members, are there any comments anyone would like to make? Well, I will make one comment. I will just say, I have a friend who's participating in the new teacher orientation program this week, and it's just real exciting to listen to new teachers coming into the system with a lot of energy and enthusiasm, and I wish them all well as we get into this year, but I think it's great to have this extra couple of days for them to learn a little bit more about Boulder Valley and be part of a team and meet their colleagues and so on. So for me, that was my comment for what we've done. Jenny?
So I had an opportunity to visit one of our community partnerships. Help me, what is it called, Bruce? You visited it too.
The Summer Success?
Summer Shuffle.
Summer Shuffle.
Yes, that we provide some staffing for, I think, or some cooperation with, and I know Impact on Education has helped fund that and is working with Boulder Housing Partners. And it takes place in three of our, three of Boulder's housing projects, and being taught by Boulder Valley teachers. And I'm glad that we're able to support that effort, and I look forward to hearing some of the results because it looked like a, there was just a lot of energy in the session that I had an opportunity to watch for a while. So I'd like to thank the community partners and Impact for sponsoring that great program.
Great.
And for giving me something to do that day.
Yeah, it's a real good program. Any other comments? Shelley?
Ah, yes. I met with the Federal Relations Network day before yesterday. That's the group that discusses federal issues as they relate to school governance. And there was a staffer there from Jared Polis's office, and she kind of updated the group on what's going on in Washington regarding education. And a lot of it was regarding higher education, so I won't go into that too much. But one item was to how to reduce federal student debt, which now exceeds consumer debt. It's $3 trillion. So one of their emphasis will be on counseling kids in high school, so in that way, it might affect us on how not to take on too much debt when they go to college. For example, choosing for-profit colleges and then not getting much in return for their investment. So that's something that might hit us eventually. But the one thing that they are talking about moving towards is more competency-based education versus the whole Carnegie unit way of measuring kids' credits. So I think we should look to that potentially gaining steam and hitting us at some point. It sounds like there's a lot of support for that. I think that one thing she said over and over was that she really encourages school boards to, to call Jared and their congressman and invite them into the schools, because so often what gets attention in their offices is obviously what they know. And if, if parents aren't calling, or if school board members aren't talking about, for example, not having funding for IDEA or whatever it is that we're concerned with, you know, what they do is before they go to Washington, they say, "How many people called me on this?" And if the answer is zero people have called me on this, then they don't bring it up when they get to Washington. So it's, she was reiterating how important it is for us to invite these people into our schools. So I would suggest that we do that. They're usually in Washington for six weeks and then back home for three, and during that three, you know, the more we can get on their schedule and get them into the schools, the better for us. There was a comment about how apparently Fairview called Jared's office and wanted to have Jared come visit, and so he did because that goes into his scheduler, and the scheduler just puts it on his schedule. He doesn't choose, you know, where he goes. And he got apparently a lot of heat for going to such a high-profile, you know, wealthy, highly academic school and not to some other schools that might represent, you know, the demographics more. And so she was a little, you know, she was like begging us to call because she didn't want that to happen to Jared again, apparently. So I guess, you know, that was the highlight. It was interesting, that group is gearing up again for their trip to Washington and trying to assess through CASB, you know, what our interests are that we want to take there again in February. And so it was good, it was a good meeting.
Please.
Shelley, one comment. So Congressman Polis had actually extended an invitation out to our principals who work in the Broomfield area, Broomfield, and both our district as well as Adams 12, so they had a session this afternoon, and, you know, members of our leadership team joined the principals there. I just received an email message from one of the principals giving an update. So anyway, I think the suggestion to invite any of our elected officials to our schools is a good one, we're working on that. And I would just say, to Jared Polis's credit, he has made an effort to get in our schools and also to meet with leadership, several, we've met with him several times. So I just want to affirm what Shelley's saying, and again, I think we've had a productive session with him just this afternoon, so thank you.
And could I comment on that as well, please? So, because I agree, Shelley, I mean, I think it's really important for us to contact Congressman Polis, who I have tremendous respect for, but I will say, that one of the reasons it's important is because otherwise he gets his information not from our schools in Colorado. And I had a really interesting conversation with one of his staff members one time as a follow-up to a letter I'd written about some concerns I had about his position on charter schools. Forgive me, I can't remember exactly what it was, but it was clear to me in the course of that conversation that she was basing her, her not, I mean, she was basing her information on charter situations that are nothing like Colorado's, you know, that she was from back east, she'd never been to Colorado as far as I could tell. Maybe they've remedied that since, but I think there was a freeze on federal funding at the time. And so she didn't know what the conditions of charter, charter schools were in Colorado, and they were very different. So that's another reason that it behooves us to stay in contact with our own congressman, because otherwise they get their information about public education from other regions which may or may not have the same issues that we have. And I would just like to say that Fairview is a fine school for him to visit. It's his, it's in his district. Why wouldn't he visit it? So.
Good. Any other comments? Board comments? No? Okay. Thank you, Shelley.
Thanks.
The next item on our agenda is consent grouping, and I'll read them. Personnel items, 7.2, approval of minutes for the June 10 regular meeting. 7.3, approval of minutes, June 17 regular meeting. 7.4, approval of minutes for the August 8 special meeting. 7.5, acceptance of donation from Superior Elementary. 7.6, acceptance of donation from Ryan Elementary. 7.7, acceptance of donation from Aspen Creek K-8. 7.8, acceptance of donation from Whittier Elementary. 7.9, acceptance of the superintendent performance evaluation. 7.10, amendment to the superintendent contract. 7.11, appointment of an assistant secretary to the Board of Education. 7.12, approval for purchase of Microsoft licensing. 7.13, award of contract for Bear Creek Elementary Bank restoration. 7.14, Colorado Youth for a Change dropout contract for the school year 2014-2015. 7.15, Infinite Campus Renewable for the school year 2014-2015. 7.16, Out-of-Cycle Textbook Adoption, Social Studies Materials. 7.17, Out-of-Cycle Textbook Adoption, World Language is Spanish. 7.18, Permission for an Employee to Sell Products to the District. 7.19, Ratification of Meet and Confir Process between the Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley APT Team and Non-Represented Employees. 7.20, Revised the Schedule of Board Meetings During the Months of November and December 2014. 7.21, A Grant, Curriculum and Instruction Consolidated Federal Programs, Titles 1, 2, and 3, U.S. Department of Education via the Colorado Department of Education. 7.22, A Grant, Instructional Services and Equity Through Fiscal Year 2014-15, Adult Education and Family Literacy through the Colorado Department of Education. 7.23, A Grant, Secondary School Leadership, Carl Perkins Career and Technical Education through Colorado Community Colleges. 7.24, A Grant, Special Education for Fiscal Year 2014-2015, IDEA, Part B, Special Education, U.S. Department of Education via CDE. And finally, 7.25, The Grant, Special Education, Fiscal Year 2014-2015, IDEA, Preschool through U.S. Department of Education via Colorado Department of Education. Do I have a motion to approve? Jenny? Seconded by Tom, or excuse me, Sam. Excuse me, Sam. Okay. Are there any items that anyone would like to pull? Are there any items, are there any items where people have questions that they would like to ask? Jenny?
It's not a question, it's a comment, is it?
Comment, please.
Yes. So I would, I was looking over the social studies adoption, and I would like to say that I was so pleased that, at that particular adoption, because I think what it was attempt, I mean, it's a step towards increasing the rigor, taking a piece of curriculum that is used in AP classes that has to do with document-based questioning and, and moving it into non-AP classes. And I think it's the kind of thing that I'd like to see us doing more of. I hope we'll see more, more information like that, because I think that anything that, I mean, I do think that those document-based questions are a great way to increase critical thinking skills in our students and to teach them basic history skills that would be useful to anybody going on to a college-level class, I think, or just doing their own particular reading. And it's a shame we haven't been doing it before this, and so I'd like to thank the social studies teachers who decided that their students, all students were capable of that, that level of critical thinking.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sam?
Just to add a couple of quick ones. In 7.19 on the Meet and Confir negotiations, what is the rationale for reducing the sick leave payout? There's one attachment here showing how the payout for unused sick leave is being reduced pretty much across the board.
Shelley, do you have?
For some teachers, by as much as 25%.
Sure. Sorry, I didn't see this attachment before, but the, the sick leave payout also was changed so that it's not based on the starting teacher salary anymore. It's now based on the professional technical and building administrator and central administrator minimum in their range. So it's now, it's more closely linked to how the leave is earned. And so the percentages were changed so that the cost to the district was fairly neutral, and that's why the percentages went down. It's because the amount is now based on the minimum of their range instead of the starting teacher salary.
Okay. So if I'm a teacher and I'm cashing in some unused sick leave?
This is not for teachers.
Oh, it's not? Okay. Sorry, misunderstanding.
Which is why we changed what it's based on.
That's, that's, so this now matches the group that's actually receiving the sick leave. That was the change, Sam.
Okay, well, I won't ask my second question.
Okay.
And on the, on the Title I grants, so we're getting this, our Title I population, Title I, population of low-income kids is stable, but we're getting less money.
Correct.
Because the feds are putting more money to other districts?
So in simple terms, this is based on census data for the county and for our school district. We had some discussion about this in the spring. And so what happens is Boulder Valley School District in Boulder County, as a proportion of the total number of families and children in poverty for the state of Colorado, we're proportionally less because the growth of, or density of the families in poverty and children, the census data across the state is increasing more rapidly than it is in Boulder Valley. So a set amount of money, proportionally, we're a smaller part of the whole, so we receive less money. And so that was something we pursued last spring. We were hoping it was an error. We think it was not an error. So the unfortunate part is, is the density of poverty in the state of Colorado is growing rapidly and more rapidly than Boulder County. So I guess it's a win-lose situation, but that's the rationale. We're just a smaller part of the bigger whole with a fixed amount of money.
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Tom? Brooke? Shell? Tina? Okay. If there are no more questions, Sandy, will you please call the roll?
Albright?
Yes?
Belville?
Yes.
Benford?
Yes.
Fuqua?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So the next item on our agenda are action items, and the first one is the Educational Facilities Master Plan, which we've been discussing for a long time and have a new copy that we picked up this week. And Dr. Messenger, would you like to give us a little introduction to where we are?
Pretty much.
Lori, we'll need a motion.
Sorry. Always forget. Do we have a motion to approve? Tina, second. Jenny? Thank you.
Well, thank you, President Albright, members of the board. It's actually with a great deal of enthusiasm and pride that I present this to you this evening. This document, which is before you for action this evening, is the product of months and months, over a year's worth of work by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, which you charged over a year ago to do the needs assessment for the district and ultimately put together a plan for the future around our capital improvement needs. You had extensive review and discussion of that proposal in the spring, in June, right before our summer break, and you gave an affirmative nod to proceed with a package of $576 million for the bond election, which is scheduled to occur in November, if you approve that later this evening. So this document, which is posted on the district website, we do have hard copies. If folks are, have trouble accessing it on the website, we'll certainly assist them with that and certainly would provide a hard copy. We've made a couple of revisions, mostly just cleanup, but that's work that's going on. So I'd like to take just a little bit of time and walk through how we got to this document. What this document provides is an introduction to the community about how, what work went into this document, what effort was put in in that needs assessment through our staff working in partnership with our community through the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. And ultimately, what was presented to you in the spring was a prioritization of those needs and costs associated with those, and the criteria we used to determine whether it's facility condition assessment improvements, program condition assessments, all of the different areas and criteria under the leadership of Assistant Superintendent Don Orr, who's our Assistant Superintendent for Operations, and his team did an incredible job, they're project managers, really working building by building, getting input from principals, staff, and others around the needs of those schools, so that we had a common criteria that we applied as we went from school to school. So what's contained in this nearly 80-page document is a description of that work, and I want to highlight just a few things, if I could, for you this evening, and you're very familiar with this document, because you've been looking at it a lot the last week, but for our viewing audiences, there is an executive summary at the beginning of the document for the reader to really get a quick glance of what's included in here. So I would just draw folks' attention to that. One of the things that we identify in here is one of the challenges we face with our aging infrastructure, our buildings as they get older year by year. We built new schools in the '06 bond with Casey and Columbine, but basically, our schools are dip, you know, over the course of several decades, aging and needing many improvements. So aging buildings is one of our biggest challenges. Of the $576 million, over $230 million of this bond proposal really is looking at infrastructure improvements, fixing roofs, replacing boilers, creating more efficient systems, really work that just needs to be done to maintain the community's investment in our assets of our buildings. And so that's described here. As far as enrollment management overall, our school district is stable to slightly growing enrollment, with the exception of one area where we have a more rapid growth, and that's East County. In the Erie area, there's building going on in the west side of Erie that's in the Boulder Valley School District, and we do not have any school presence in that area. So one of the, one part of this package is to build a new campus, building on a campus there that would serve pre-kindergarten through eighth-grade students, up to 1,000 students in that location. So that's really our touch on enrollment management. Also included in this package would be the replacement of three elementary schools, Emerald Elementary School, Douglas Elementary, and Creekside. So spread on the kind of the south half of our district, Douglas being just east of this building here. These are buildings when we did a facility condition index assessment. The decision was made, we have an indexing we do when we assess that building, rather than invest additional money into an aging facility that doesn't have the core infrastructure that will extend its life, as was happened two years ago with Casey and Columbine, the recommendation is to replace those three buildings. That's built into this package as well. All 55 schools, charter schools, neighborhood schools, focus schools, all will be touched by this bond issue. Improvements will occur in every one of the buildings. Obviously, less investment in our newest buildings, greater investment in our buildings that are older and have not had the kinds of fix and repair and improvements that is, that are needed as we go forward. So again, all of that's described in there. I wanted to talk a little bit, in addition to the over 30-member Capital Improvement Planning Committee that worked on this, we also ran community engagement sessions. You were at them last spring. We had a lot of community input. We did our BVSD lessons, our online virtual community session. We also conducted a scientific poll using one of our local firms to get a sense of what's important to our community. That description is in this document as well for the community's review, all of which helped inform the recommendations we brought to you last spring. One of the things that is a product of this work is to really create better learning environments, safer learning environments, healthy learning environments, and creating a place that students can thrive. And so that's an important part of our investment going forward. Another dimension of this bond package, Facility Master Plan, that we're particularly proud of is the Innovation Fund. Over $20 million is identified to be distributed across all school campuses that would be available for each school to use those dollars to design with the input of parents, community, and faculty, innovative practices that will help and promote increased student learning. And so that's a unique dimension to this proposal, which we think is a real, although not a large percentage of the total, we think is a real asset. Also, a continued investment, building on the work of previous boards in our community, early childhood education. So this proposed package would provide, provide early childhood education, both full-day kindergarten capacity, classroom capacity, as well as preschool. So that's an added benefit we see going forward. Obviously, it's not the operational cost for those services, but certainly creating the space and capacity to host them in every one of our elementary schools across the district. Also included in this package is an intentional work around sustainability, replacing aging systems with more efficient systems so that we can bring our energy costs down and also create better learning environments. Every building will have improvements in their HVAC systems or heating, ventilation, and cooling systems. Some of the buildings will have full air conditioning because of the needs of those schools, but every building will have improved ventilation, which, again, not only temperature but just air quality that will be provided in the schools. So that's important work that's included in this package. And then in this document, for the reader just to know, that every school building is, a page is dedicated to every school building, which introduces the building, a little bit about the building, its square footage, the original construction of the building, some of them have had additions since then, and also what our estimated project budget is for each of the buildings. And then on that page also, broken into categories of the facility condition, program compatibility, health and physical development, safety and security, sustainability, and innovation. Every one of those categories are brought forward for the schools with a brief description of the kinds of projects that will likely occur in those buildings, and then again, a cost estimate that ranges, you know, from 95% of what we project to 105%. So it gives a, at least a ballpark of what our best estimate is based on the information we have. So every one of our schools are included in the following pages, then you get to page 76, near the end of the document. I wanted just to bring your attention to a few items in that area. So there are some efforts that will occur at the district level for district-wide services. There are dollars incorporated in this bond that would rebuild, build a replacement transportation facility on this Arapahoe campus, a very aged and decrepit system and inadequate. Some of you toured that last spring and can appreciate that. Also, an investment in this particular building to create better professional development and learning space. So again, not unlike our older schools that are struggling with aging facility, this building is as well. And also on this campus would be the placement of a district kitchen, food preparation facility that would be a renovation of the warehouse in this building to create a more efficient food service system for the school district. So those are some district-wide investments that for the most part occur on this Arapahoe campus. You know, improvements that are long overdue, and appreciate that you've supported including them in this package. Also, we have areas of district-wide improvements from information technology that supports all of our schools and administrative services. I mentioned the full-day kindergarten and the early childhood, the preschool education, which are incorporated in this as well. The other page, on page 79 of the document, is dis- The other page, on page 79 of the document, is description of centralized special education services. So what we're incorporating is a little over $6 million that would do a visioning process with our community to identify the kinds of services that would best be served centrally for the district. You'll see in the document, the Halcyon Campus, which is in South Boulder, there are some improvements listed in here for that building, but those are really minimal investments to make that building usable. But it would be our plan to take services that we provide at Halcyon now to put in a centralized location and along with other centralized services. But that work would be done post-successful bond election. On page 80 of the document is a one-page, a far less complex than the earlier spreadsheets we shared with you, that provide an overview of the total investment of $576 million, broken into broader categories. So sort of at a glance, the reader can see how these all add up and the proportion of them. Again, 235, over $235 million is around facility condition, that's improving our facilities. And then there's an accompanying pie chart on the facing page that graphically represents that in a different way. So a lot of work has gone into this, and your support in the spring and June to give us an affirmation to proceed with this, the work of our community to date. We've had good conversation in the last month with teacher leadership, employee leadership, administrative staff, and community. We have several presentations scheduled in the next month or two to share this information with the community. And so your leadership is really enthused about this and really appreciative of all the hard work everyone's invested in this, knowing that the hard work's really just beginning. And so I would just mention one item. Later, you'll look at the bond ballot language, but that's the next item on your agenda. It references this document. So this will be guiding our work going forward after a successful bond election. It is within your authority, obviously, to amend this document over time, and then that becomes the new revised guiding document. In the 2006 bond issue, that happened several times because things discovered along the way, not radical shifts, but when there were shifts, the Bond Oversight Committee, which is a community-based committee that provided oversight of the work and reported back to the board, they made some recommendations to the board that the document needed to be amended. So we're not trying to forecast anything. I just want you to know, that's the process we used in the last bond and might well be some changes, because this is our best forecast based on the research that we've done and the direction you've provided to us. So President Albright, that would be my concluding comments on an overview of this document. And again, we appreciate the time and attention of the board and the staff looking at this, and we're anxious for our community to become familiar with this document. Thank you.
Thank you. A good overview to this document, which is obviously extensive, given how much work has been involved. So thank you. Board members, are there any comments or questions? Shelley?
I just want to go on record as saying that I'm in support of this bond for many of the reasons you just described, but I'd just like to reiterate that my support is contingent on preschool and full-day kindergarten never being mandatory for kids. I don't believe a lot of kids are emotionally ready to go to school at age three, and if it ever comes to the point where the state is telling them they have to, I will be talking about this again, because that is not something that I think is fair to happen. And I also, I have mentioned this before, but I think full-day K should be structured so that kids who choose to attend half-day only are not missing out on any of the academic portion of the curriculum. So just want to put that on the record.
Okay. Thanks. Tina?
Jenny?
Tom?
Jenny?
Jenny?
I'm really excited about this. A lot of this work, I mean, we, you know, have been in the process of upgrading our facilities for the last six or seven years, but there's way more that needs to be done. And I'm really excited for an opportunity to address many of these issues in a really substantial way that'll leave, it won't address all of our needs, but it'll address a truly substantial portion of them, and it'll make our schools better places for our kids and line, you know, line our buildings up more with our mission, vision, and goals, which I know you're going to add to this document very soon.
Revision.
So, but I, and so this is, this is just for going forward. One of the things that came up in the last bond was brought to my attention, and I felt really terrible about it when, when I realized, as we upgraded playgrounds, we didn't always pay attention to the needs of some of our children, students with disabilities, even though, even in schools where we had programs for, specifically for those students. And so I'm really looking for a commitment that, as the work goes forward, as we're upgrading playgrounds and making other kinds of improvements, but particularly that one that we keep in mind, that we want our playgrounds to be accessible to all of our students. And so, and I think that's really important. So that's my, my request. And then it occurs to me that people are going to be asking all kinds of questions, and the board has already had an opportunity to address many of its questions in a work session last week. Maybe, I hope we'll be keeping like an FAQ page on the, on the webpage that, that addresses some of those questions.
Absolutely. Thanks, Julie.
Tom? Sam? Any comments or questions? Guess, no? Yeah? Tom?
So a lot of the, the funds here are being expended for repair, replacement, safety and security issues that we just have to, have to meet due to deteriorating conditions of our schools and the inability to fund those in a sustainable way at the state level. So, but there is a, a portion of the money that's being expended towards, you know, new things, innovative schools, for example. And I'm anxious to see how this ties in with the strategic plan. So I'm looking forward to seeing that presentation coming up, and I'm hoping to see some real meat as to what we're talking about, how that ties into our goals and how this is pulled in. Because I think right now, that's the bow that's missing on this. A lot of good, hard work has been done into what our needs are, but there's also some work here that's been done in where we're going, and I want to see that tie in. And I know that everything can happen at once, but, but I'm really anxious to move forward to strategic plans. It's been a long time in coming, and I want to start implementing it.
Yep. We do, too.
Thank you. Sam? Amy? No? You're okay? Okay?
Just say I'm supporting this proposal, and I think it's an opportunity for our voters to make a lasting investment, investments that'll be paying off after many of us are gone. So don't let our lack of discussion tonight, those watching at home, indicate that we haven't vetted this thoroughly and completely through our SIPS committee, through our staff, and through multiple conversations at this board. So now we look forward to bringing it to the wider community, and I think we make a strong case, they will support it.
Good. Thank you. Jim? Lenny? No? Okay. Well, anyone else? So I've been on the board for six years, six and a half years, Jim and I got elected. And we inherited the last bond, which was great work. And here we are, for the first time, being able to look at a new bond question. What I really want to say to start with is thank you to the community people who participated in this, the people who are on SIPS, who gave a lot of time and ideas and suggestions and recommendations, both through the SIPS process, as well as through the online process, through the forums that we held. We have received a lot of feedback, and our staff has received a lot of feedback from people in the community about what we're looking for, and this document reflects that. And so thank you to all of those people who actively engaged in this process of thinking about our buildings and what we were looking for. So thank you to the community people. And I would also like to thank the staff, who's given a great deal of time, both the staff led by Don Orr and Susan Cousins and the project managers, who've been looking at our facilities for the last many years to try to think about what needs to be done, but also department heads to think about how the academic program ties together, and school-based staff, who are thinking about what their needs are. So we have really solicited a great deal of, of support, and I, I think that it's made this document be better. I've appreciated the collaboration and the cooperation and the good ideas that have been brought forward. What's really interesting, I think, Bruce, you talked about it, is that half of this doc, the document says, half of this work is about remediation and dealing with aging facilities that we can, at this point, begin to improve. And the only way we can do this is by passing a measure like this, going to our public, because as Tom said, the state does not fund this. We get zero, we don't get money for our buildings, and so it's up to our community to support that. And so it's why we're taking this, I will vote enthusiastically for this, to take it to our public to say, what kind of facilities do you want for your children, for your staff, and for the excellent program that we offer in Boulder Valley School District? So it's been a terrific 18 months, and thank you, Bruce, for leading it and getting us through this, this whole effort to improve our learning environment and, and for our kids. And, and I think it's going to be productive. I'm confident the public will, will take it seriously. I'm confident they will listen to what we are proposing and, and the reasons for it. And I'm very optimistic that, that in the middle of November, we'll, we'll have the results of this election and know what our, that our public is, continues to be with us. I think it's a, it's been called a grand proposal, a bold proposal, but our needs are significant, and I think it's about time that we step forward with a big bond, but I think it's exactly the right thing to do.
Excellent.
That said, I guess maybe it's time, if anyone else doesn't have a comment, let's call the roll.
Albright?
Yes.
Belleville?
Yes.
Benford?
Yes.
Fuqua?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the bond ballot language, Bruce also, which you referenced.
Do you need a motion there again, Lori?
Sorry.
A motion, please.
Someday I'll get this straight. Do I have a motion to, to approve the bond ballot language? Jim? Second? Tina? Thank you. Bruce?
So in your board agenda, item 8.2, Resolution 14-20, is a resolution that authorizes the conduct, to conduct this election this November. So what's included in this, in the resolution, is a statement of intent, and the total cost for this bond is $576,520. And so it reflects that in it. It identifies the counties of which voters reside that will vote, vote for this, for the Boulder Valley School District, which include Gilpin County, also Boulder County, and also Broomfield County will be voting on this. So much of what's in the resolution and in the actual bond ballot language is required by state statute, so we've honored that and incorporated that, which includes both the amount of the total bond, the entire payoff over the course of the payback on the bonds, and also what the maximum annual payment would ever be on a given year. And there's some variability with that, but by law, we state what the maximum would be. Included in the bond ballot language are four bulleted items. This is a similar format that we did in the 2006 election, where we've identified, in sort of broad-brush terms, but descriptive enough that I think those who read this in advance of the election, as well as those when they go to vote, either by mail or in person, will have a sense of the nature of the projects, of the improvements that Tom mentioned earlier, addressing the needs of schools around modernizing the facilities and creating better learning spaces, from regular education to special education, including innovative practices. Also, our investment in early childhood education with full-day kindergarten and preschool is one of the bulleted items. And also, building the new school in Erie to account for the enrollment growth that we're experiencing there. So it certainly doesn't capture all 80 pages, but it does reference this document and provides an overview for the voting public as to what will be incorporated. And obviously, between now and mid-October, when early voting starts and through November, when the election occurs, there'll be a lot of information distributed. We're working on an information plan right now to provide information to our school communities and our broader community. So with your approval of this proposed resolution and ballot language, that will make it official, and the campaign will begin. We have community groups waiting to initiate that campaign, and they're just waiting for your approval of this ballot resolution and bond language this evening. So we have folks available to answer questions if you have them, President Albright. But otherwise, this is ready for your approval, so we can proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? Jim?
So I would urge the public to not let all that legal lease scare you. The, the main points are in the top part. And I know it's going to be a long ballot this year for everyone, but I'm sure when they read BVSD and bond opportunity and what it's going to go for, that if they have any questions, they would, would hear about them, the campaign would hear about them. But I'm excited to get this phase of the project over with and vote yes on this, so we can start the campaign, starting in about five minutes after we pass this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No. Well, we've had a lot of conversation about it, so thank you again for producing this and our legal team. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Sandy, please call the roll.
Albright?
Yes.
Belleville?
Yes.
Benford?
Yes.
Fuqua?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda are study items, agenda setting. Are there any topics that anyone would like the Agenda Setting Committee to discuss at our next meeting, which is, I guess, in early September, I think? Is that when it is?
August 26th, the next meeting. Oh, our, our planning, I'm sorry, yes, early September for the Agenda Setting.
Okay. The Agenda Setting. Sam?
So I'm still looking for an update on our special ed programs. I think I started asking for that in last December, after coming out of the audit that identified deficiencies, and still hoping for that update.
I assure you, receive it before the one-year anniversary of your request.
That would be appreciated.
It's in a nearly final draft form, so it's nearly, really, we're, it's, it's next in the queue, so yeah, thanks for the reminder. It's on our list, it's at the top of the list now, too, so thank you.
Right. That's right. But thank you. Anyone else? Tom?
So I'm still interested in class sizes and where we are and, and seeing that data.
Okay.
I had submitted an RFI that was deemed to be, take too much staff time, so I think we either need to come back and vote on that as a board, whether we want to do that or not, or, or modify that to where it takes less time. So I'd like to have that addressed.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Comments? Anyone else? Okay. Bruce?
So I, if I could just make a couple of comments if we're finished with that portion. First of all, I just, so you approved in consent action this evening my evaluation and my contract, and so I just want you to know, I appreciate that. Both the evaluation, that you take time annually to review my performance and have several hours of conversation and give me feedback, that really helps me in my leadership. What you are modeling in your evaluation of me, I mean, the fact that I have seven bosses is maybe a bit unique in the district, but thank you, because that's exactly the work we're doing right now with our teachers and our principals around refining the evaluation system and giving them quality feedback, and in our strategic plan, that will advance to all of our employees. So I think it starts with you, and I would just want to thank you for the evaluation and constructive suggestions of things I can focus my energies on going forward. And thank you for the renewal of my contract. It's an honor to lead this district, and, you know, that's not possible without your support and encouragement, so thank you for your support as we move forward. And thank you for your action on both the Facility Master Plan and the bond ballot language this evening. As has been stated, a lot of work has gone into this. We are enthused about the positive impact this is going to have for students today and for decades to come, and a legacy that you will leave, and the leadership of this district and all of our employees working with our community. So thank you so much for your leadership on this and the affirmation tonight.